Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and welcome everyone to our City of Palatka, September 12th, 2019 Commission Meeting. At this time, we're gonna have our invocation by Reverend Joshua Hobbs, Senior Pastor, at Church of the Heights, and also the pledge. Reverend, will you lead us in both, where do you stand?
Open your Bibles with me to Hebrews, Chapter 12. I'm just kidding, that's happened, I'm sorry. Really, Hebrews, Chapter 12, talks about heroes, does it not? And so, with this being the week that it is, we need to honor our heroes. We're gonna do a moment of silence, and I got to thinking about that. Now, I was U.S. Air Force, I've served as an auxiliary officer with the Police Department, and I know, and have talked to many people, I'm sorry for preaching, but chaos, that's when hero jump forward, is in the moment of chaos. Think of the sounds that day, think of the sounds that are going on. This is why we have a moment of silence, because they didn't have silence when heroes acted. And so, can we begin that first, and just have a moment of silence for our heroes and our victims? Father, we pray for the heroes of this nation. We have our freedom because of actions of men and women who have stepped forward into the line of fire, into trouble, to rescue, to heal, to form our great nation. So, Lord, I pray over these heroes, I pray over the families of the fallen heroes. Lord, I pray for future heroes, that they may have the courage to do what is right, to have the character and the integrity, to step forward for their fellow man. Lord, we honor them as we honor you. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord. We make decisions that might affect the citizens of Palatka, and so, continue to remind us that what we're here today for, and all that we accomplish, is the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, for your greatest creation, humanity. Lord, I also pray a pastoral blessing over our leaders. Lord, they're our shepherds, they're leading us to green pastures of prosperity and peace, Lord, and they lead us to drink from the fountain of life, Lord, from the living waters that we have. And so, Lord, I pray over their homes, and over their finances, over their health, and over their family, as they lead us, Lord. Let us become one, moving in a direction that you have for our great city and our great nation. We honor you, we praise you, in Jesus' name, amen. Would you please present? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Motion called, please.
Mayor Hill, Vice Mayor Brown, Commissioner Borum, Commissioner Campbell, Abbot Skuse, Commissioner McCaskill, four members are present and accounted for, or do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Next up is approval of the minutes, have the other opportunity to review the minutes from August 8th.
Motion to approve.
And pass on 12. There's a motion by Commissioner Borum, if I can. Is there a second by Commissioner Campbell, on the favor say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our public recognitions and presentations, and we have five for today. First up is Constitution Week, goes with the American Revolution.
Whereas in May of 1787, delegates gathered in Pennsylvania State House to chart a new course for our emerging country, meeting in a time of economic hardship and passionate debate, but with the understanding that while controversy is a hallmark of democracy, the forces of tension and uncertainty pale in comparison to the strength of our common ideals. And whereas in a document that has endured for more than two and a quarter centuries, the framers put forth the vision for a more perfect union and called it the Constitution of the United States of America. And whereas our Constitution was signed on September 17th, 1787, and after an extended period of national conversation, and with the promise of a Bill of Rights, it became a supreme law of the land, and since that time, America's Constitution has inspired nations to demand control of their own destinies, and has called multitudes to seek freedom and prosperity on the shores. And whereas, as we celebrate the world's longest surviving written Charter of Government, let us remember that upholding our founding principles requires us to challenge modern injustices while accepting our responsibilities to citizens, our obligations to one another, and to future generations, allowing us to move forward, knowing that in the face of impossible odds, those who love their country can change it. And whereas Constitution Week, designed by Joint Resolution of Congress at September 17th through 23rd of this year, was initiated by the Daughters of the American Revolution in 1955, and signed into law in 1956 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower, becoming Public Law Number 915 of the United States of America. Now therefore, I tarrel Hill Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the City Commission, do hereby recognize and proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2019, as Constitution Week in the City of Palatka, and we encourage local government officials and leaders of civic, social, and educational organizations to conduct ceremonies and programs that bring together community members to reflect on the importance of active citizenship, recognize the enduring strength of our Constitution, and reaffirm our commitment to the rights and obligations of citizenship in this great nation. And witness whereof, I'm here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palatka, Florida, on this 12th day of September, the year of our Lord, 2019. Tarrel Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Justin Campbell, Rufus Borum, and Tammy McCaskill Valentine. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second, on the favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Let's get them around. We're gonna let Ms. Kitchen say a couple words.
Oh, okay.
The Daughters of the American Revolution, thank you all, and especially in our Constitution that we have playing, and next to the Bible, the Constitution is one of the most magnificent and wonderful documents that God has ever proposed, and God did inspire our valued fathers when they wrote this, and it is the best document in the world for human freedom and liberty, right next to the Bible, or just barely under it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Bartram Frolic, Bartram Frolic Committee. And Billy Bartram.
Yeah, sorry.
Whereas in 1765, and again in 1774, William Bartram visited the area that would become to be known as Palatka and Putnam County. And afterwards, William published the book Travels, detailing his adventures, which became popular in Europe, and became known as America's first literary masterpiece. And because it captured people's fascinations with the exotic floral and final of the St. John's River, and the colony of Florida, and whereas in 1998, the St. John's River was designated an American heritage river by President William J. Clinton, and in 2012, the Bartram Trail Committee of Putnam County was formed, which began planning the development of a water hiking and bike trail commemorating many of the sites that John and William Bartram previously visited. And whereas, in honor of the 250th anniversary of John and William Bartram's exploration of the St. John's River, the first Bartram Trail Conference was held in the fall of 2015. And whereas, the National Parks Service designated the Bartram Trail as a national recreation trail in 2016, and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection designated Palatka as a trail town in October 2018. And whereas, on September 28th and 29th, 2019, the third annual St. John's River Bartram Frolic Festival Weekend will occur, in historic downtown Palatka, hosted by the Putnam County Blue As and Trails Bartram Committee, where we will celebrate the 245th anniversary of William Bartram's 1774 travels through Palatka. Now therefore, I tarrel Hill Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of September 23rd through 29th, 2019, as 2019's St. John's River Bartram Frolic Week in the City of Palatka. I urge all citizens to attend this event, and take part in the celebration of Putnam County's heritage, and relive and re-love our river's heritage and history. And witness whereof, I'm here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palatka, Florida, on this 12th day of September, 2019. Tarrel Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill Valentine. Commissioners, there's a motion on the floor, and a second, on the favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously.
You don't mind if I don't use the microphone?
You don't wanna blow it out.
Ladies and gentlemen, what an honor this is, here in Palatka, 200 and some odd years after I first traveled through here with my father, John Bartram, in 1765 and 1766. I am thrilled and honored to have this recognition today, in the beautiful city of Palatka, Florida. And I encourage you to come to the Frolic next week, right down here on the riverfront, and learn more about this beautiful place along the St. John's River. Once again, my name is William Bartram, thank you very much. And for the record, he looks good for his age.
We'll have invitations to y'all to the Friday night.
For the Frolic. Next up, Run Your Race Foundation Incorporated.
Whereas mental health and substance use disorders affect all communities nationwide, but with commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles, and lead rewarding lives in recovery. By seeking help, people who experience mental and/or substance abuse disorders can embark on a new path towards improved health and overall wellness. And whereas, the 2019 Recovery Month theme, "Join the Voices for Recovery, Together We Are Stronger," emphasizes the need to share resources and build networks across the country to support the many paths to recovery. And whereas, in 2019, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration celebrates the 30th anniversary of National Recovery Month, marking three decades of spreading the message that treatment is effective, and people can do, people can and do recover, every day. And whereas, as a part of the 30th anniversary, Recovery Month is introducing a new logo featuring an R symbol, representing R is for recovery, and the need is to support millions of individuals who are proudly living their lives in recovery, as well as their family members and loved ones. And whereas, the impact of mental health and substance use disorders is apparent in our local community, and through Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental and substance use disorders, which can lead more people into needed treatment, and managing the effects of these conditions can help people achieve physically and emotionally healthy lifestyles. And whereas, the Recovery Month observation continues to work to improve the lives of those affected by the mental health and substance use disorders by raising awareness and educating communities about the prevention, treatment, and recovery resources that are available. Now therefore, I tarrel Hill Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2019, as Palatka Recovery Month in the City of Palatka. And we call upon all citizens to join in celebrating with compelling programs and events that support this year's observance. And witness whereof, I'm here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palatka, Florida, on this 12th day of September, in the year of our Lord, 2019. Tarrel Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill Valentine. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second, on the favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously.
First, I'd like to thank God, and for everything, naturally, in giving honor to Him, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, that helped us get started. And then I'd like to thank the mayor, he's one of my fraternity brothers, and helped with, you know, supporting Run Your Race. Also, Ms. Brown, I'm gonna get the rest of you eventually, I hope, to support, but just consider the blessings you have to be in the right mind, you know, when you talk about mental health, substance abuse. But this is our second time doing it, we started a chapel that's over by the park, and it's an outdoor chapel, community chapel, and I think you'll probably see anywhere from 63 to 84 people outdoors, over by Bookwell Park, and we're not quite finished with the year, that's our new project. Before we do anything, we want to start with honoring God. And I, you know, Run Your Race, like the pastor before me, was talking about Hebrews, it always tells you, you know, saying that we all are gathered about in such a cloud of witnesses. Let's lay aside every weight that has sinned, that's so easily beset us, and let us run with patience the race that is set before us, unto Jesus, the Author and Finisher of our faith. And I have two pastors also, and one is, you can introduce yourself, the other's my brother, so. Yeah, Sergeant Major, just, uh, command sergeant major.
And again, thank you all for the great work that you're doing. Next up, we have a corporate recognition, from Walgreens, for 41 years of service.
I listen to you all day long.
I have. So, before you have Jim Ross, he's got 41 years with Walgreens, only about six years from me, but 41 years with the company. And when I was thinking about what to say, I was, we could probably go for days, on all the stories that we have, over the years of how Walgreens has changed, and how much you have affected that change as well, too. But one of the things I've learned about Jim, that I love, is that he, outside of his service with Walgreens, too, he spent 14 years as a scoutmaster, and using that service, so I've always admired that, and I always kinda considered Jim our scoutmaster at the store, too. So, when I was thinking about what to say, I was thinking about, well, what makes a good scoutmaster? And I kinda, I actually went to the scout manual.
Did you really?
Yeah. Looked at some of the characteristics that make a really good scoutmaster. One of those is high moral standards, I know you probably snicker at that, but Jim is a great example with all my staff and all the leaders in the store. You have to have a great ability to relate, you can always relate to your team and your customers with so much life experience, you always go for, you're always good for advice on any topic, from photography all the way to hunting to marksmanship. Your ability to keep a cool head under pressure, anybody that's ever worked retail understands it, it can get pretty, I see, I've witnessed, a little dicey, everyone's a lot. I've witnessed Jim take people coming in and screaming, and then walking out with smiles on their face, because he's always been able to keep a cool head.
Then I go in stockroom and scream.
Good organization skill, so anytime we ever have a problem at the store, where we can't get things organized, we can't get things straightened out, Jim's our go-to guy. He's always cool, calm, collected, gets everything in order for us. Your flexibility and your ability to compromise, you always support, you've supported every role in Walgreens, no matter what the changes and how the company, you've adapted to it, and always been able to help our customers. Good planning ability, you've never had to worry when Jim's in charge, you've always planned a week ahead and got everything completed. High level of energy, it is amazing, I know you're an older gentleman, but I've hired people in their twenties, and he can run circles around them. It's amazing. And finally, good attention to detail. Jim's attention to detail is not only in his work, but in his relationships with his team and his friends, he's the first to jump in and help, the first to offer advice, and the first to tell a great joke to lighten up the day. So in conclusion, I'd just like to say thank you for all your years of service, not only on my behalf, but on the behalf of Walgreens.
My pleasure.
It's been enjoyable.
For 41 years of service, we're now up to our youth, State Gorgeous Girls Conference, Miss Florida Teen, Katia Gary. Does that say it right?
Hi, everyone, I am Katia Gary, I am the co-owner of State Gorgeous Girls, and I'm also your Miss Florida Teen USA 2019. I have someone very special with me today, this is Montana Watson, she is also a part of State Gorgeous Girls, and she recently won the title of Miss National American Junior Teen, and she's also our State Gorgeous Girls Ambassador. So, I wanted to talk to you guys today about self-esteem. Growing up, I don't know if any of you guys have had teenage girls, but it's very difficult. One time, I scheduled an appointment for Cool Sculpting, because I didn't like a part of my body, and I called my mom, I was like, hey mom, we have a consultation, I wanna get this changed about myself. She said, are you crazy? And I was like, no, I'm not crazy, I don't like this about me, I wanna get it changed. After about 30 minutes of conversation, I realized it wasn't for me. But not every girl has the opportunity to have a mother like mine, who is able to teach me how to love myself, and how to accept myself. Seventy-five percent of girls engage in negative activities such as cutting, bullying, drinking, and smoking, because of low self-esteem. State Gorgeous Girls is an organization that exists to build girls' confidence by providing educational classes, in hopes that they'll make better life choices. We also have a very fun, glam part of State Gorgeous Girls, where they get free prom dresses, hair and makeup, jewelry, and a professional photo shoot. And this is all to reinforce the fact that they're beautiful and they're loved. State Gorgeous Girls is going to be in Palatka for the second time, thank you, Mr. Hill, for allowing us to come back. And we are going to be here October 19th, and I'm here to ask you guys today for support for State Gorgeous Girls. We need everyone in the City of Palatka to support the organization, so we can allow your girls of your city to have high self-esteem, so we can bring down the 75% of girls who engage in negative activities because of an insecurity. So, if you want to get more information on ways to support this organization, State Gorgeous Girls, you can contact Dr. Charlotte Gary at 904-236-2068, and Ms. Sabrina Newton, our Palatka Coordinator, at 321-276-8123. Thank you so much, guys, it's an honor to be here today, and thank you for allowing us to have it here, you guys are sitting.
Do you have any flyers, do you have any flyers, or anything like that? Okay, so, and we can, we can get that published, whatever.
So, Commissioners, State Gorgeous Girls is one of the, is one of the initiatives that we push as a youth empowerment program throughout the city. It was started, it brought to, it's brought to the city through the efforts of Sabrina Newton and others, and it's been something that we've been, been with since its inception, to remember the incredible presentation last year, as well as this year. It's been a great event, and it's my suggestion that we continue to support this event, and it would be my request that we support them by providing a $500 sponsorship.
If that's amenable to everybody, I can entertain a motion or pass the gavel. There's a motion on the floor, by Commissioner Campbell, and a second by Commissioner Borum. Any further discussion on the motion, seeing that, on the favor say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you guys. And also in the back of the room, Chief Shaw and Mr. Eddie Cutright, they're in the back of the room, the Police Department is over, our Cultural Resources and Recreation Department, and Richard Cutright in the back of the room, he's not secured, he's the, he's our director. And so, if you can get with them, we'll make sure that you guys are accommodated. Again, thank you very much. Next up, we'll move to public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes, no act will be taken on topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? If you are, there's a yellow card in the back of the room, if you would fill it out for our record, and bring it forward with you when you come, and if you want to fill it out for a specific item on the agenda, just mark it, so that we'll know. We have one, we have two speakers who are here for general commentary, first up is
My name is Linda Kreider. My name is Linda Kreider, and I live at 116, Percolon Street, Palatka, Florida, and I would like to send this around to you, to let you know what is going to be happening. You heard earlier from our William Bartram, well, if you wanna hear stories about the St. John's River and his travels, weaved into a series of songs that local songwriters have put together about the St. John's River and Bartram's travels, there's going to be a concert on Friday night, September 20th, at the Laramo, that will follow an art show, an art opening that's, the St. John's through Bartram's eyes. And the concert is $7, the art show is free and open to the public, it starts at 5:30 and the concert's at 7:30. Send that around to you. And we'd like you all to come, so we just wanted to let you know about it. And William, do you have any comments about what you're gonna do that night?
I would like to just say that this is gonna be a very special event, and even though you personally may not care for art or music, you need to come to this event, or tell your friends to come to this event, it's gonna be tremendous. There's gonna be stories about the St. John's River, Palatka, alligators, all kinds of things that you're familiar with, whether you like them or not. So I would encourage you to come out, that's a week from tomorrow night, over here at the Laramo Center. And once again, I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Nicole Grace, Keep Putnam Beautiful. Let's give her a warm welcome.
Hi, I'm Nicole Grace, and I'm the new executive director for Keep Putnam Beautiful, and thank you, Mayor Hill, for stealing that thunder. Next Saturday, I wanted to remind you, next Saturday, we do have an international coastal cleanup, it's gonna be on all of our waterways, as you may have noticed, we're going to have some special events coming up very quickly, and this'll put us in our most sparkling and beautiful best. I have supplies for cleaning, if you need pickers to reach into the water, or along the shoreline, so you do not have a close encounter with snakes or alligators, I have those available, as well as trash bags and recycling bags. We have special bags that are clear with recycling symbols on them, so you know which bags are which. The really important thing about the International Coastal Cleanup is that we're tracking the litter that's coming down our waterways. So we just had Hurricane Dorian, and all that water coming from South Florida flows up to us and brings along with it some of that detritus that we can fluck from the water and keep out of our waterways. from the water and keep out of our waterways and oceans eventually as well. That's going to be next Saturday, the 21st. So after you're good and happy from the event with the songs and stories, you can head out. It's from 9:00 until 11:00. So it's just two hours that we're asking you to be out there. And if you can just contact us through keepputnambeautiful.org, and just let me know what you found in the water and how many bags that you picked up and what interesting things you found. So I believe they found anchors, buckets, bicycles, a speed sign, which I don't think they officially said anything. But thank you very much, and I'm really excited for this year.
Thank you.
Let me take one item out of order. Item seven on the agenda, which is regarding donation of Rotary Ball Field from the county to the city and accepting a donation from the Rotary Club of Palatka. Mr. Martinez.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am here representing the Rotary Club of Palatka. Very briefly, let me mention to you that Rotary Park was created mainly through the efforts of Bob Webb. I recall being his administrative assistant in 1982, dealing with political bodies in Putnam County. We were successful in getting the school board, the city, and the county to agree to closing the street, remitting the land back at the Campbell Building, so that we could create Rotary Park, which is today a softball field used by girls and boys. Having said that, I have proposed to the Board of Directors at the Rotary Club of Palatka meeting that the park would not in the shape that the city maintains their parks. It's a county park, it was a county park. And I offered the Board of Directors that I will make a personal contribution of $10,000 to the city of Palatka. And the board matched my $10,000, which made it $20,000 to be donated to the city of Palatka once this park was transferred from county to the city, which has been accomplished. There were other conditions that I've given you. The makings of a memorandum of understanding. And the Rotary Club of Palatka is flexible. We're not mandating anything to you. We'll tell you what we would like for you to accomplish on behalf of the young boys and girls of Putnam County. A, the city of Palatka takes legal title to Rotary Park. B, the city of Palatka will use the $20,000 contributed by the Rotary Club of Palatka to renovate Rotary Park. In addition, the city of Palatka will contribute any other funds necessary for a full renovation of the park. The Rotary Club understands that a full renovation will not be able to take place this fiscal year. However, our club would like renovations to begin this year and be finished within two calendar years. C, the field, and that's the condition of my $10,000, is that the field will be renamed Bob Webb Field at Rotary Park, and remain so for a period of ten years, beginning at the time of the recording of the deed by the city of Palatka. D, in accordance with the Putnam County Commission's expressed wishes at the commission meeting, Penau Baptist Church will have priority to use Rotary Park in his condition. Penau Baptist Academy will relinquish the contract they have with the county, which was passed on to the city. Relinquish that completely, no less, no less boys. And the city of Palatka Recreation Department will give them exclusive, I'm sorry, relinquish exclusive use. The Penau Baptist Academy will have scheduling rights, initial scheduling rights for their girls' softball team through the city of Palatka. When they confirm that in writing to your satisfaction, the Rotary Club of Palatka will then confirm the $20,000 contribution. $10,000 will come from me, and $10,000 will come from the Rotary Club of Palatka judiciary. If there's any changes from this, we need to discuss them because the $20,000 is contingent on Penau Baptist Academy relinquishing their sole control and use of Rotary Park, which Rotary Club of Palatka was never aware of, by the way, in 2005. It's a long time back.
Any questions from the commission?
And that they, Penau Baptist Academy, agreed, and the city will give them initial scheduling rights at the beginning of the season for them to schedule their softball team there. Mayor and commissioners?
What's more?
Any questions?
I was just wanting to understand if the $20,000 would be for just a one instance, one-time deal? How does that fit in with what we currently have? I mean, I know we've got a number of different things as it relates for the recreation piece. And if we could take on additional, I don't know how much it costs to maintain those fields or whatever it may be, or whatever, but $20,000 to-
Capital costs, capital costs.
Right. And I don't know how our budget looks. I mean, we'll have to look at that. But if our budget can maintain that, you know, I'd be happy to entertain that. The other thing, as it relates to the contract piece of it, where they maintain priority as it relates to that, I don't know how that would work with taxpayer dollars if it's coming out of general fund in terms of they have it's not first priority over the park with that control piece. I don't know how that works. So I don't know whether to get-
It's been handled, Counsel. So just to kind of give you a little background on this. Some of the concerns that were addressed by Mr. Holmes, as well as Rotary, have been, been discussions ongoing as it relates to this matter for a while. We brought it before the commission before, having the additional opportunity to regain, to gain some control of the park that's in the South Historic District. And so Mr. Holmes has looked at it. One of the issues that was there was, there was a renewal of an agreement, a five-year agreement with Penau, where they had exclusive use of that field through the county. And that was something that we were not at all happy, satisfied with, because you basically were given a government property, municipal property, to a secondary entity and allowing them to control it and do whatever at the property. And it wasn't really allowed to have public access to it. One of the things that we talked about was envisioning that park being something that could be used by people within the area, letting it be a neighborhood park as well, even though Penau would play their home games there. So during softball season, they would have, we would accommodate them so that their practices and also their games would be held there and that there wouldn't be a scheduling conflict as it relates to those activities that are there. But during the times where they didn't have the field, it would be open to the public in any manner possible. That didn't create any infringement on any rules or priorities that are related with the city. But there's still things within the agreement that we're trying to hash out before we bring it back to the commission for final approval. The county commission has since entered into a resolution which said that they would be willing to convey. But the city has not, at this point, accepted conveyance until such time as all the terms have been hashed out. And based upon the budget that we have in place, we can handle bringing the additional field on. We think it'll be another opportunity for revenue within the city. But we're still going to work through all the pieces of it just to make sure that it's going to be something that's advantageous for everybody. Worst-case scenario, we'll work with the county to try to make sure that the field is up to the proper standards that Rotary wants to see in place, so that it'll be a viable piece for the entire community.
I wouldn't mean, I don't mind taking on additional things as long as we can support that. But we have a number of parks that are not up to the level that some of the other parks are already, you know. I know the ones that down Main Street, those really look good. And some of the other ones, Limer Heights area. But we do have some other parks that I think we probably need to consider about either shedding them or whatever it may be, especially if we're taking on additional. I think it's just going to require a little bit more resources. So that's just my comment.
Well, we've been, the city for years have been doing recreation for the county. And that park was put there, and everybody used it. If the things that we need worked out are done, I don't see any reason why you can't work to kind of do that. We've got now a new recreation, the red plan and the system. And I'm sure that there are things that they can put in that park that will take care of the people, the young people in that area, other areas. And we'd like to thank Mr. Martinez and the Rotary Club for considering it, because at least it will be upgraded and brought up to a standard. If, I think we need to hear from our legal person if there is something that we need to put on the table now.
I'm not wary of any people on the table now. The county has actually executed these and is holding up any resolution of these matters for the city of Palatka.
I thought it would sit quietly.
Yes, it hasn't been. But what we're doing now is making sure all the details are hashed out, that we're actually looking at feasibility to make sure that all the concerns are being addressed so that we can formalize everything and bring it before the commission for final approval in the coming days. And again, we thank you for the update. And we also thank the Rotary Club and you for your gracious donations to our Recreation Departments and also the County Recreation Department, the services that you guys have in place. So again, thank you very much. Just give Mr. Martinez a round of applause. Moving back to our agenda. We've got item three. Before we move to item three, is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? Seeing no one with closed public comment, moving to item three, which is consent agenda. We have items A through J on the consent agenda. I'm going to ask that item D be removed or any other items on the consent agenda that we wish to have removed at this time. Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve all items except D.
D is resolution adopting the mayor and city clerk executing the Passerol Associates Work Order for Land Acquisition and Products Administration Support Services in Palatka Municipal Airport, K-Lark and Field. We have Passerol here to kind of give some additional information.
So you're going to tell us why?
He will tell you why. We go ahead and put it.
I forgot the motion.
There's a motion on the floor, the second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lesko.
Good evening, Andrew Lesko with Passerol Associates. Yesterday about 9:00 a.m., I received an email from the sellers of the property on Route 100, the two parcels associated with the appraisal services for Passerol. And it was a copy of a signed seller offered to the city for the two parcels. And I just want to bring that to your attention. In the last 24 hours, the signed, I had a signed scan page. I went by their agent's office today and received a full copy of their purchase offer. And I just wanted you to know that you had that from them signed. And when the appraisals that are a part of our authorization come in, when they are equal to or greater than the cost, I want to bring that to your attention, that it would be prepared and ready for the city to take action. That all just happened literally in the past 24 hours.
So as we continue with that, I think one of the things that's necessary for us to move forward is, as far as also, if we look at this to make sure that we give authorization to go ahead and enter into the acquisition contract if the amount comes, if the appraisal amount comes in greater than or equal to the acquisition contract that's in place thus far. And so that's one of the reasons that we want to make sure we have this on the agenda so that we can pull this, so that we can make sure that we cover our bases as it relates to this contract.
I'll make a motion for Passerol Associates to enter into an agreement if the contract, I mean, if the appraisal come back equal to or greater than the amount.
It'd actually be the city in the agreement. For the city, not Passerol.
Oh, for the city agreement.
So the city would enter into the agreement, not Passerol.
Okay, for the city to enter into agreement with-
With land acquisition.
With land acquisition.
If the appraisal comes.
If the appraisal come back equal to or greater than the initial amount.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? And your motion includes approval of item D?
Yeah, that includes approval of item D.
Is there a second? There's a second by Vice Mayor Brown. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Great work.
If I may, just want to add one more thing. I have my airport consulting team here with me tonight. Again, you don't get to see their faces very often, but they are the dedicated professionals that do all the work and all the work orders. And you've got several work orders on here for Passerol. We always appreciate the work here with the city of Palatka. Chris Johnson on the left, he's our airport planner.
Bring him up.
Come on up here, guys. This is Chris Johnson. He's basically your airport planner. He's the guy who did all the FA coordination and kept the environmental approvals so we could get that 300 feet of runway back. It is not easy to get the FA to give you 300 feet of runway back, but that is from Chris Johnson's technical efforts. Matt Singletary and Bruce Bradley right here. These are the two engineers, Matthew Project Manager, and Bruce is your engineering designer. They're the ones who designed the actual construction and bid documents, so you could get the grant to do the physical improvements. And then on the far end is Harrison Corb. He will be assisting with the construction phase, making sure that it is all done properly. And again, I was telling the mayor before the commission meeting, you know, these are the guys that really do the work. I stand here at the podium a lot, but these are the hard workers that get everything done and do the work for the city of Palatka and think they do a really good job for you, so.
Fifteen years now, and still counting.
I like to urge our people to go out there and look at our airport. You know, we forget we got an airport out there, but that airport really looks good. And he gonna be doing big business out there one day. I told him, he has to get to it. I want to see international business coming in and out of that airport so we can create more jobs and more businesses there.
Take care of all y'all good guys.
Also, guys, also, on an additional note, Passerol Associates, over the last four years, three years, four years, no, four years, has sponsored a trip for our youth to go see the Lando Magic play. We take our high school girls, Palatka High School Girls and Boys Basketball Team every year. Their Lando Magics bus picks the kids up, takes them there. We meet the mascot, we go on the courts. It's a great opportunity. They've met several NBA greats who've talked to them about what it takes to get to the next level. But as well as that, they've also talked to individuals But as well as that, they've also talked to individuals from Pastoral who talked to them about careers and what their career paths have been and the challenges they've had, and encouraged them to look outside of what they can see on a daily basis in order to move forward. And so we definitely appreciate you guys for investing in our youth and for the work that you've done. We've been advised of an additional opportunity to go to the Jacksonville Jaguars games this year and do some other stuff with them, as well as, there's some ongoing conversations about looking into aeronautics programs for our kids in the high school and moving forward with additional curriculums that will allow us to move our, to bring our children to a whole different level in Palacka. So there are a lot of great things that are gonna come out of the airport. We're gonna continue to work closely together to make this stuff a reality. And so from aircraft mechanics curriculums to aeronautics, we're trying to do everything we can to make sure we create viable and sustainable workforces. So again, we thank you guys for everything you're doing.
Have John stand up with him too, 'cause John is our manager.
Just don't let him talk.
I do need to brag on this guy.
Do it tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
People's gonna be a long story.
Moving on, item four of the agenda, presentation and acceptance of fiscal year 2017-18 audit and comprehensive annual financial report, April shooting, car rigs and Ingram monitors.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. This one, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. You should have your please for you. April shooting with car rigs and Ingram. I'm your partner on audit this year. I also have Hallie been through with me, a subject of various speakers. This is the person who did all the work. I just kinda come in, let it begin and end and take all the credit or the yelling, really. So this was your fiscal year 2018 audit, which is completed. You all have a copy of it. I have been instructed to keep this short and sweet, and so the real page you want for that review that you need to look at is page 88 of your audit. That is your summary of the audit results. And the most important thing that you're gonna see here is item one, it is unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion in accounting terms is a clean opinion. It means these are good numbers, they are materially correct, that you can rely on these numbers going forward that will produce part of your findings department. We did, behind me, you'll see a series of findings. These are all control findings where we talk about various areas in the internal control process that we think will be improved. We've been working very closely with your findings department, Logan, making a lot of changes over the last year, 18 months. I expect to see these come down quite a bit in the next year, quite many fewer findings. And also, if you were finding, the audit can go faster, and you should be getting this report faster in the future as well. The more findings we have, the longer an audit's gonna take, and we have to dig a little deeper with everything we find. And so that's really your key things here, is that you have a clean opinion. There are some areas for improvement that we did note, and there's the details in the back. We're certainly happy to address any of the specific ones, but I think it would be, who have any one to keep those verbiage here. So I'm happy to respond to any questions or go into more detail on anything that you would like me to.
Any questions for the commission? Ms. Becker, any comments?
No, I'd just like to thank CRI for the partnership.
Likewise, I echo that sentiment. I think there's been substantial progress made over the last few years, particularly these last few years as it relates to implementing new processes and controls, and Ms. Becker has been working diligently towards that, and CRI has been very instrumental in making that happen as well. You, Dave Hill?
Well, I mean, I just think findings are always good, I mean, as long as you can address those findings, and when you find something, you get it corrected and we move forward. So certainly appreciate, thank you for all y'all doing for us.
And as we, should we get a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Accept.
Most important, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item five of the agenda. First public hearing, trim calendar fiscal year 2019-2020 proposed budget and millet rate for 2019-2020 budget year, 6.4000 mils proposed. Part adoption. The tax authority levying the property taxes, the city, is the city commission of the city of Palacka. The rollback rate is 5.5501 mils per $1,000 of assessed value. The percentage of increase is 15.31% higher than the rollback millet rate. The operating millet rate is to be levied is 6.4000 mils per $1,000 of assessed value. Item A is resolution setting the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 millet rate at 6.4000 proposed for adoption.
No, she's gonna read the question.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Palacka, Putnam County, Florida, adopting the proposed tentative operating millet rate for the purpose of levying of adware taxes for the city of Palacka, Putnam County for fiscal year 2019-2020. Whereas the city commission of the city of Palacka, Putnam County, Florida, during regular session on July 18th, 2019, adopted City of Palacka resolution number 2019-R-8, setting the fiscal year 2019-2020 tentative millet rates following a public hearing as required by Florida statute 200.065. And whereas the city commission of the city of Palacka, of Putnam County, Florida, held a first public hearing on fiscal year 2019-2020 proposed budget on September 12th, 2019, as required by Florida statute 200.065. And whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within the city of Palacka, Putnam County, has been certified by the county property appraiser to the city of Palacka as $457,913,420. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of, or by the city commission of the city of Palacka, Putnam County, Florida, that one, the fiscal year 2019-2020 operating millet rate for the city of Palacka is 6.4000 mils, which is more than the rollback rate of 5.5501 mils by 15.31%. Two, the final budget hearing on the adoption of the final millet rate for fiscal year 2019-2020 is scheduled to be held on September 26th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall, 201 North Second Street, Palacka.
So move.
Motion for a second. We're not before public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? If not, questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, resolution document proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 budget.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Palacka, of Putnam County, Florida, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2019-2020, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Motion on the floor in the second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item six, ordinance amending appendix A, fee schedule corresponding code of chapter 54, planning chapter 66, solid waste chapter 77, subdivisions chapter 94, zoning in chapter 86, utilities, water and sewer rates, first reading.
An ordinance of the city of Palacka, Florida, amending appendix A, fee schedule of the municipal code of the city of Palacka as it pertains to fees and other charges relating to chapter 54, cleaning historic district fees, rates for chapter 66, solid waste garbage containers, chapter 74 subdivision, subdivisions, rates for chapter 86, utilities, and chapter 94 zoning actions, fee schedule, amending corresponding sections of Palacka municipal code for chapter 66, solid waste, chapter 86, section 311A, new connections, and section 312, deposits, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So move.
Motion on the floor in a second. We're not before the floor for public hearing. I've got one speaker card, which is Carlos Richard, 1301 Cleveland Avenue. Carlos Richard. Going once. Going twice. No, Mr. Richard, is there anyone else here for public? Is there anyone else here for public hearing? Yes, just one second. Is there anyone else here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
I would like for us to let folks know that the reason that the rates are going up is for us to try to get this town where it needs to be with our water lines and sewers and get it working effectively. I think we have to raise any of our water sewer bills, but to keep up with the times and what we need to have good clean water and good system. We are still working on getting our plant brought up to standard and working very hard trying to hit the woodwork. I think that everybody's sitting up here, but everybody we know to get the help that we need, and I'm hoping that it's coming this time. But it disturbs me for me to have to both to raise a water bill and I know some people on fixed incomes. I would like to ask if those people on fixed incomes, we could ask staff to take a little look to see if some of those folks, most of them probably are senior citizens or people who can't get around, would be able to get some system worked out so that they'd be able to still sustain themselves even with the raises that we have going on.
Any other comments?
No other comment.
Just duly noted, we'll give that to staff, commissioner. I think one of the things that we have to also understand is that we have over 65 miles of critical water lines that need to be replaced within the city. We use a separate phase approach to get to that point. The commentary came in initially in 2014 after studies were done, that we were roughly 60% below the rates that were within our area for cities that had comparable size. The other thing was that we were about $28 million anticipated at that time in potable water line replacements as it related to costs. We've acquired an SRF loan for $7.1 million, which allows us to be able to come in and do some stuff. We've successfully gone through about a third of the city by using our own means to creatively leverage what resources we have in order to fix and replace water lines at this point. We still have to deal with sedimentary sewer. There are so many things that have to be done. We've got water lines that are wooden with stamps from 1886. And so as we continue to do those things, we're mindful of where we are as a community, but we also understand that there's a cost associated with moving forward, and we're conscious to make sure that those costs also include some incentive for those who can serve. And so we'll continue to move forward to do those things to make sure that the single user or the smaller user is not absorbed costs for those who use more. And so we're definitely mindful of what you're speaking of, and we're gonna try to do everything we can to make sure that everybody's covered. The greater efficiencies that are coming from operation and from less damage to our plant will allow us to pass savings zone. But at the end of the day, when you carry the horse that's crippled, you gotta do what you can to get to the point we can run again.
Well, I understand that, but what I wanted you to do to us, what you did, explain to people the reason for it being done. Sometimes we don't mind doing it if we know why.
I've been singing the same song for five years. I'll sing it till I leave.
Well, you're gonna keep, you're gonna have to keep singing.
Any other comments? Any other comments for the commission?
I echo that same sentiment. We have to move forward. We need to move forward in a more accelerated pace. We're gonna have to do something with these water lines as it relates to the number of breaks that we have. When I first came in the office in 2015, we had two and a quarter breaks a month, and we bumped up to like four plus breaks a month, water mains and different things of that nature. So we have crumbling infrastructure. We got to do something, and we can't continue to wait. So what we're doing is gonna impact some people, but we're gonna have to keep moving forward, and we need to move a little bit faster, in my opinion, so. That's my, that's my point.
And staff has done a great job moving forward and tackling one-third of the city that hadn't been tackled in 130 years.
Yeah.
Anything else for the commission? Vice Mayor, anything else?
Nope.
Seeing nothing else at this point, we'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And thank you very much. We've already, we already addressed item number seven. Item number eight is discussion relocating, regarding the status of relocating City Hall, Public Works, and Police Department. At this point, I'm gonna come forward at this time. I'm gonna ask that premier, premier will come forward at this time.
Okay. Excellent. So, what would we like to discuss?
One of the things we have in the agenda is just, talks about replacement costs. If you can, just explain the rigor and structure you have before you, and also maybe talk a little bit about what the replacement cost in the building is at this point, and then we'll let Mr. Callahan speak from there.
Okay. Hello, I'm Joe Keimar, I'm with CRG Architects. I've been working with the city of Palacka and with Kevin Callahan about the, we call it the PRC wave building located out near the airport. This is approximately a 43,000 square foot facility that the city of Palacka is looking to utilize to move Public Works, city of Palacka business, and the city of Palacka Police Department main offices to this location. Vacating some of the buildings that are in the historic district in the downtown city of Palacka, opening up to other ventures, and also to update any of the current facilities, facilities that are in now. The renovation costs would be quite high. This building is already built, is located in a decent part of west Palacka, I guess you could say it's the western side of Palacka. And it has a lot of existing infrastructure, and looking at it from the point of view of, since I said it was a, new construction cost for a building of this nature, anywhere between $200 or $300 a square foot right now with the current construction costs in the market. The market's going pretty crazy right now. A million dollars used to be a lot of money, and right now, a million dollars isn't much in a world of commercial, or commercial construction. It's a, I think I did, my preliminary estimates on a building like this was somewhere between five to eight million dollars to build brand new, if you were to get the land of this property. It's about, I think, 12 acres of land, is what he said. The infrastructure that was done there is 427 parking spaces, so it's a lot of asphalt, it's a lot of greenery, and the building itself being 43,000 square feet with uninterrupted power supplies and generator, and it's a steel building with a brick facade. There's a reason why you see stucco going up everywhere, it's a lot cheaper than brick. So it's, again, there's tie, kinda tying to what the building is and replacement costs is. If the city of Palacka was to try and build something new today, the cost of doing that would be cost prohibitive at this time. And this is just artistic rendering of the outside of the building, what it could look like for the city of Palacka. This is, let's see, move it up, we'll go to the next page. This is what I was talking about with the campus of the building. This is about, on the full acres of property that are already there, this is how it has already been developed with the parking and for the facilities of the city of Palacka, the police department, and for Public Works. It allows them, number one, they have plenty of parking for all the people that would be in the spot, plenty of patrol car spaces, and then there would be an addition on the backside for Public Works to maintain all of their fleet equipment as well. And, let's see, the last page. What we did was we did some preliminary lookouts on how we could take this existing building and divide the spaces to accommodate what your needs would be. And one of the things that should jump out at you at least a little bit is this area right here. This would be the new boardroom for the city of Palacka. Currently, we're in a space that are around 3,000 square, oh, sorry, 1,000 square feet, more or less, and we're looking at more than doubling it to around 2,300 square feet to allow for bigger, bigger meetings, bigger population, and more, you know, work to get done. And about, let's see, what is it, 19, close to 19,000? square feet to allow for bigger, bigger meetings, bigger population, and more, you know, work to get done. And about, let's see, what is it, nineteen, close to nineteen-thousand square feet of this existing space would be specifically for the use of the Police Department. And Chief Shaw, you can help me about how big is your building right now? Do you know?
About nine-thousand square feet.
Nine-thousand?
Yeah, so we're looking at. And he's got three up, three-thousand square feet in the, in the annexed building.
Yeah, so, you know, it makes sense from a square foot point of view as far as the space that could be allocated to the different facilities for the City of Palatka. And since it's an existing building that hasn't been occupied in quite some time, Kevin Callahan with the Mayor Development Group is anxious and willing to work with the City of Palatka, you know, kind of maybe help with the renovation and the costs associated with that, as far as providing the costs and the construction and buildout for something like this. But again, I'll let Kevin speak more to that. I'm just here showing the pictures and showing what we're talking about as far as when we talk about relocating the City of Palatka to central workings to the west side or out of the city proper and outside to more of the outskirts of this.
Okay. My name's Kevin Callahan, here with the Mayor. We own a lot of buildings that are not only in Cleveland, but also in Kentucky, Arizona, and other places. We purchased this, we thought it was, it's a very, very well-built building. It's on, what we liked about it was masonry. The glass goes all the way around the building. It had four-hundred-and-twenty-seven car parking. Fully AC, it has a huge generator, you know, so which has been very, very helpful in storms. What we liked about it was the infrastructure. There was just, you know, there was a call center here before. There's quite a bit of existing upgrades to the building which you wouldn't see in a normal building. So that's what we liked about it. We've been here for roughly three years. We've been marketing it. We've come close to some tenants, but if we could help out in any way, and it seems like a very good fit for your needs, and anything we can do to help, we're gonna try to accommodate. We are a construction company and a development company, so we'll do what we can to try to help, you know, develop this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Can I ask a question? If you fill out, if you fill out speaker card in the back, if you can for me. Well, I'll let you ask your question, and just make sure you fill out cards, so we'll have it for the record. I've got one speaker who's listed on here, Ms. Kitchens, thus far. Ms. Kitchens, you wanna come forward? We'll get your card. Chief, can you give him a card? She can fill it in.
Allegro Kitchens, ten-twenty-seven South Twelfth Street, Palatka, Florida. The majority of Palatka citizens live between the east side of Palm Avenue and the St. John's River. This proposed location for City Hall, the Police Department and Public Works is two-point-four miles west of Palm Avenue, five miles west of the current City Hall, and two-tenths of a mile from the city limits of Francis. The majority of crime in the city limits occurs in the heart of Palatka between Palm Avenue and the river. Citizens need the Police Department to be located in the area where the crime occurs, where most crimes occur. This proposed location is four-point-eight miles west of the current Palatka Police Department building on Eleventh Street. The proposed location is seven-two-two-zero PRC Way in the Putnam County Business Park is not a good choice for the city to consider moving City Hall, the Police Department, or even Public Works to. The proposed location, almost in Francis and five miles west of downtown Palatka, is not convenient for the majority of Palatka citizens. It will remove one of the main reasons for people to come to the downtown Central Business District. One of the talking points when people try to sell visitors on Palatka is, quote, "The quaint and historic City Hall located in the heart of historic Palatka." I don't think saying the new City Hall, close to an airport, sign a food processing plant and a business park has quite the same appeal. Also, the future land use map, the plume, shows the area's best future land use as industrial. That alone should tell you it is not a good location for City Hall, Police, or Public Works. This area is very prone to flooding as prior, as prior to being developed, it was lowland, hardwood, and swamp. If you want to understand how badly this area floods, look at what happens at Palatka Health Center, now Solaris, when a rainstorm comes. At the workshop held at three-thirty PM on February the twelfth, twenty-eighteen, to discuss improvements to City of Palatka facilities, you all looked at four options for City Hall, Police Department, and Public Works. You chose options two and three. Option two, which includes the renovation of the City Hall Annex, Police Department sides, and move Public Works to riot solutions. Option three, moving City Hall Annex, Police Department, and Public Works to the PRC site. The only discussion tonight is, per the meeting agenda, is to discuss moving city facilities to the PRC site, and the money to do that has already been put into the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget. When is the information requested by you on option two, renovating the City Hall Annex, et cetera, going to be presented to you for discussion? Is the PRC budgeted four million dollars tied to the purchase and buildout of the PRC property? Or can it be used for option two, if you opt to make City Hall, Police Department, and Public Works stay in the downtown Central Business District? There are at least three good locations for the Police Department and Public Works in downtown Palatka. I don't have the time tonight to discuss them with you, but we'll be glad to talk to you anytime and tell you what I've discovered, which I hope you will do before you move City Hall. City government and the City Hall is the heart of Palatka.
Thirty seconds.
Please keep the heart of Palatka in downtown Palatka. Thank you.
Sir, you wanna, you'll make your comments, sir. Come forward. Just give your name and address when you come forward. Okay, and you can pass your card to Commissioner Ford.
My name's Jack Edlundson. I live at three-oh-eight South Thirteenth Street in Palatka, Florida for the last four years. I just had a simple question. I didn't kinda take a hint of all of this. What happens, that's what I was gonna ask you. What happens in all this? This is some, this buildings up here.
They're not going anywhere. They're, they're not going anywhere. One of the things that, one of the things that we talk about is the highest and best use for facilities. This building, I think by anyone's opinion, it's not conducive for what we're doing thus far. It's very difficult to, to actually come up to today's standards and do work in here based upon what we have in place. We've got people scattered all around. We don't have the internet infrastructure in place. It's gonna cost us two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars just to pull fiber so that we can actually online and stop losing connectivity that we have thus far. As it relates to the Police Department, I think the Chief can do his job if he was located in Francis. It wouldn't matter where he's located because they drive the police patrol the area in cars. And so I think that there are opportunities for us to continue to provide the services necessary, the plan is to have a substation which is here, a service center which is here in Palatka, within the same locations right now for the Police Department. As it relates to Public Works, their facilities are horrible. They're old, they're, they're old, it's a hodgepodge of different things, and they're unable to really keep up. The working conditions are difficult for, for our workers. When we look at what goes on with this building, we've explored many options as it relates to what's in place. I think the last speaker missed one of our meetings because she didn't have a here conversation that came after all the other conversations. But I also think that there's an opportunity for us overall to, to really take our community to another level where we can have everyone in-house in one location and be able to do, and be able to work. The annexed building, recreation has already started, some renovations relates to that. That building's gonna continually have a presence. We moved our water billing to the Gas Authority, which is still in the Central Business District, and that allows, and that's where most of our traffic goes. Most of our traffic doesn't come through City Hall. You can count the ten or twelve people who come through here on a regular basis, and half of them are probably looking for somewhere, looking for another department and then redirect it somewhere else. But as we continue to grow this community, Palatka's gonna grow westward. The greatest concentration, the density of people in this community is on the west end. That's where all the larger apartment complexes are. That's where the greatest opportunities for, for additional growth is. We just had, we just approved one apartment complex with a hundred-and-ninety-five units. So all that stuff is there. And so we don't look to get rid of our presence in downtown. What we're looking to do is grow this community, to put ourselves in a position, we're twenty, twenty-five years from now, we're not sitting on top of each other and trying to figure out where the next piece of space is gonna be to do work. We wanna create the proper working environment for our citizens. The plan, we hopefully, hopefully, as Palatka grows, we outgrow this building, and we find ourselves building a new City Hall somewhere else at some point because the city has began to burst at the seams. And that's what we all hope is gonna happen. But we're not selling property in downtown. We're gonna continually make sure that we get a higher rate of use, whether that's in a bed center here, or a conference center, or whatever it may be, but something that puts it back on the tax rolls where it's rendered for market value that gives us an opportunity to create some additional draws to our community, and that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we're closed for public comment. Any, any comments from the Commission?
Well, I mean, I do know we're in a place where we need to be able to, we're exploring right now, and we have not just settled in on one location. I mean, and I've talked to the city manager as well as it relates to looking at and exploring options, and then also pricing out of a new building. What would it cost for a new building and where, you know, what other areas do we have available to us? And I know we had a couple of other options before over there right off of Palm Avenue, but again, he's putting together some more additional things. This is just for discussion and conversation. This building can no longer serve the needs for our employees, our work function, as well as the community. We've outgrown it. We cannot support a number of different things that comes in here. We don't get a lot of traffic anyways, as it relates to that. And again, like the Mayor said, we, our Department did move to the Palatka Gas Authority. So the foot traffic that we used to get from that is no longer coming here. Outside of that, our planning, a portion of that is over with the county. So again, this particular building, we're upgrading our technology, infrastructure, the design of the building, it does not fit that, that need, and it will cost us astronomical amounts of money just to get the infrastructure in that we need to get in here, and it's almost impossible to do, to do it without extraordinary cost. So we've looked at a number of different things. This is just one of the options, so it's just a discussion.
And just so that the numbers make sense, there's some people, we looked at, we explored options of just building a Public Works facility, it's three-point-seven million dollars. We've had discussions in previous years under previous administrations about building a new Police Department, and the number was somewhere around four-and-a-half million dollars. We've had conversations about just building a new City Hall, and those numbers were upward two million dollars. So if we do basic math, four is always less than all those numbers combined. And we're trying to be fiscally responsible in how we work this. It doesn't load a budget, it comes from six different funds, and it creates opportunity for the city to grow. If we continually do what we've done and we stay where we've been, we don't go anywhere. And so that's my thought. Vice Mayor, do you have any closing words?
I just would like to, I mean, see, this is for discussion. I'd like to wait and see what the other two Commissioners, my mayor, is, how they feel about it.
We're not voting.
We're not voting.
I know we're not, but I still, I would like to hear from everybody how they feel about it. That's my.
All right. And so, next steps for us is at our September twenty-sixth meeting, we will come back with the recommendation for the Commission as a whole to move forward. So, thank you guys again.
City Manager Administrative Report, Mr. Griffin.
No, sir, I haven't made it. Just real quick, I distributed to the Commissioners a copy of proposed marketing schedule for releasing the proposed ninety-day trial period for a once-a-week residential collection. We don't need to discuss it tonight. I just distributed for your review and comment. Feel free to reach out to myself or the City Manager with any concerns or questions. If we hear none, we'll be starting next week and sending out the notices to all the customers and then as well as the releases in the paper and some other press releases through some of our partners throughout the community. Are there any questions about any projects?
Okay. Can we also look at including those when the water bills go up?
We looked at that, sir, but we would miss one-third of the customers, so we're gonna do a mass mailing to everybody.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Is there any, or can we also do like, how do we do the alerts out to the?
Of the personal one?
Yeah, so if we can kinda do something along those lines of things.
And you have a school district to do.
Capture.
I can ask the school district. I asked the Emergency Operations Center, and it didn't qualify because it wasn't a public safety issue, so.
All right, okay. We'll look at the options on that. Thank you. Chief? Chief Shaw?
I have my time.
Chief Shaw?
Mr. Yoo, you got anything? What else? You got anything? You sure?
Yeah. I just wanna say really fast that we wrapped up this audit. We just presented. We're already kicking off next month, starting fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. It's the earliest that they've done it in a while, but we're on schedule to get started.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin.
I wonder, I want you guys that next Thursday night is the Northeast Florida League of Cities Dinner meeting. We are accepting your presence.
I got bored reading out the meeting.
Real, real fast, I've given you an activity report from the Police Department and from the Fire Department. I was asked for a couple, the last month was coming to give y'all some monthly information, so we'll work on this a little bit and get it for you, but hope for your, this is leading to what you're asking for. The other thing I got, the, the Fire Department has ratified, voted and ratified the union agreement for three more years, and you've got a copy of all the changes down there. They want three, three changes that they asked for, and you've got a copy of ratification where they voted and accepted. And I'd like to make an agenda item for the next meeting to ratify the union agreement.
Yes, sir, we got you. Is that everything? Commissioner Ford.
All right, well, I think, I'd like to thank the City Manager for the reports. Just, I can get one more thing, if you don't mind, that risk insurance rating. I can get that without the personal information. That'd be great. I went over with our city clerk, but if I could just get that information without personal information on it, it'd be great. I appreciate it, and we continue to work to help lower our overall.
Sure. Thank you.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Vice Mayor.
I will talk to the Commissioners about, any idea when the state room is done?
We have no idea.
No, nobody?
Nobody, yeah, we're just here, but he can take care of you.
Oh, I'm not gonna put that on him. I'll go out and look every couple of days. Okay. I would like to say, you said last time, and people didn't realize it, but our mayor has just become president of Florida League of Cities, what do you call it?
Board of Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes.
And we got two-hundred-and-forty-some cities.
Four-hundred-and-eleven.
Four-hundred-and-thirteen cities, we have two-hundred-and-forty-two cities that are members of Florida League of Mayor's.
And so I would like for you to know that we aren't just sitting on our hands when we go to these meetings, that we are affecting the whole state of Florida.
And so, again, thank you, everyone. We had a great time yesterday with our Patriots' Day program. We're continuing to move forward. The time is seven-twenty-nine.
The highlights aside, everyone.